Sorry, uh, call order. Our head county commissioners meeting for June fourth, twenty twenty four.
Need to turn on your mics.
All right, my call order, our meeting for, uh, June fourth, twenty twenty four. We need to do the adoption of the.
Uh, move to that, the agendas present or exception of removing items eleven A, sixteen B, and sixteen C from the agendas request.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um. Thank you, call. Yeah. Yeah. All right, uh, any public comment? A public comment and approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the May twenty first, Commissioner's special meetings presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Miller. How you doing?
Your following commissioners.
All right. Monthly report. You have anything to add?
Nothing to add, other than I'd like to discuss the field trips.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we're ever gonna have time enough to do a whole day trip and maybe we better break these out and just do like three or four hour trips in the afternoon after you meeting. What do the commissioners think? How do you wanna?
Well, I was thinking of that the other day, Miller, if we, uh, if we left here, we went down to that ridge and up through, you know, there we go, see the new bridge. Then, uh, head up to the windmills, down to, uh. We approve the liquor license for snack bag and then visits that site for a minute. And then, uh.
Seems like we could do that in four hours, doesn't it?
And they, uh, finish it down there.
Yep.
We can say, my, is there any way we could get like through? August and then do it in September, I just, just such a. May, June, July are just really, really tough for me. First part of August.
How does, how does September sound?
Yeah, September works for me.
Yeah, that would be a lot better.
All right. We pick in October, we take a shortcut.
Yeah.
Yes, there you go.
All right. You guys some agreements?
Okay, so I'm gonna, I move to accept and file your team monthly report presented second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 If anything to add about the, uh. Fire and emergency management, um.
Prices have gone up a little bit on both, but not, not outrageous.
And we, those are now in here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to approve the renewal of the fire and emergency management services agreement with the city of Elsroar, Sir Fletcher's landing is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And how about the change, anything to update us on the, uh?
Again, there's a little change, an increase in price, but, uh.
Basically the same agreement, right?
It'll be the same agreement, the only change is price.
Yeah. So I move to approve the renewal of the fire and emergency management services agreement of Franklin Volunteer Fire Department, Sir Township. Nine S D, ten S D, sixteen M D in the area of Sunrise Trail and the, uh, township seven S D is presented.
Second motion. Favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Leroy.
Whoop, 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 there we go, I'm here. Um, I, yeah, I got nothing, uh, I guess I got nothing to add to the report. Park, parking lots, uh, I think they put the striping, the last bit of striping on the road yesterday. Be in pretty good shape.
So I'm gonna move to accept and file the report, monthly report is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Leroy, you're not, there's no reason for you to come up today, right?
Correct, correct, yeah, we, we took that off the docket.
We'll have that other discussion perhaps in two weeks if necessary.
Good.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna, I think, uh, I talked to Michael, we're gonna meet, try to meet anyway and try to hammer some things out.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank.
Thank you.
Request to move, Brittany, relax, payroll.
So move, second. Favors?
Aye.
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 Request to hire Lane Rush Franklin's full-time fractures officer with all-time benefits of pay rate nine A effective June fifteenth.
So move, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Request to hire Deborah Robinson of Elsroad as part-time fractures officer as needed at pay rate nine A effective June eighteenth.
So move, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Request to hire Dominic Mitchell of Alltown as part-time fractures officer at pay rate nine A effective June eighteenth.
So move, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
So.
Still short one. But, um, these two, just they wanna come in and see what's about, uh, interested in full-time, you know, make sure. Work this, they can work the schedules.
So, the part-time, that.
These two part-timers are interest, all the interests of full-time work, so. Bring them and get them trained out, see if it's something they want to do.
And then once, if one of that workout, then you would be up.
Yes, yes, all of them, we have other people that are interested also, it's more, interviews tomorrow.
Good. All right, thank you. Share some of this.
Just move into that, I didn't know if you wanted to. So I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Justin Abernathy effective May seventeen, twenty twenty four, and wish him the best of luck.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, cruiser beds. I don't, I don't tech services. I have tech services. This listed as unmarked cruiser. I would be, I need for two, it looks like. So I guess individually broken down for each of the.
You'd like to shine reviews of their quotes, I mean, they'll help and point the.
It's like the individual, uh, my own review.
Yeah, they're great, it's a eighteen category, but it is, uh, six. Total is fourteen thousand seventy five dollars and seventy nine cents.
So that's for all the components.
That's for all the components in the, uh, unmarked, uh, unmarked.
On your top, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy nine cents. Okay, so. That's just outfit, that's the outfit. So as I read the bids. Okay, just sort of makes sense.
Yeah, I was, I, uh, sent it out for bid in three different ways, they could either bid for just solely the vehicles, the vehicles and outfitting, or just outfit. That way you guys would have all available options.
And next one's listed as, uh. Island Tech. Yes. So one of the other components is listed nineteen thousand, seventy dollars and sixty seven cents.
Oh, that's just the outfitting.
Yeah.
Nineteen thousand, what is it?
Nineteen thousand, seventy dollars and sixty seven cents. Next one is also Island Tech. This is listed as unmarked vehicle. Sixty nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy cents.
Was that for the marked?
The unmarked.
Yeah, should be, the unmarked.
The six. Okay. This one's, this one's, so is that, is that?
That's the fully outfitted, right?
That would be the vehicle. Fully outfitted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so make sure. All right. Island Tech. That's listed as part vehicle. Seventy-three thousand, six oh five, sixty-seven. Seventy-two thousand, six oh five, sixty-seven. Part vehicle. This one's under the wind war audit group. So this would be the unmarked fully equipped. So. Okay, unmarked, fully equipped. And we're on a group, sixty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
That's part of the number.
So it's just all part of the same quote?
Yeah, so if you go back, right, if you go back to that previous page.
Yeah.
They have two more contracted, it's I T S outfit, so that's.
That's the fourteen, right? Okay, all right.
At sixty-seven, three, that's a complete outfitting.
Yeah, it's for two. Yeah. All right.
That was just unmarked.
Is there an, is there a marked price in that one?
Okay, they only have highlighted.
They highlighted, well, that's why I just, I didn't know.
Okay. All right, so the marked vehicle is seventy-three thousand, one hundred dollars. That spin is a little unusual. This has option two written on it from Dylan Young. What would you consider option two?
That would be the. Costs, uh, for a Tahoe fully equipped.
I think, I don't know if maybe this is, is it doesn't have the proper, uh. Information on the front of the envelope. Do you have any other bidding that's going on for anything? All right, so Dylan Young says, uh, four thousand dollars.
If he could do that, that would be great. Thank you, yeah. We'll replace our whole fleet.
Someone, someone's.
Yeah, it sounded like we didn't wanna purchase. We did move a Ford Explorer out to the lawn last week to utilize parking, and so I'm wondering you.
That's what I wonder.
That's what I'm trying to put in a bid for my Ford Explorer.
So, um, I would say you need to look over and make sure you do everything, so the specs that you need. Right, over to before we make a decision. I, I have the information, but I just, before we act upon it, we gotta make sure. Yeah, that's what I make sure.
If you guys don't mind, happy we.
Yeah, just look at it.
Any other issues on the back over and kind of get it.
Yes, just look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just to, uh, finish up on the last thing, did I do those, uh? Uh, the next item was given, uh, C would be D, uh, memorandum of agreement concerning schedule changes. So. Are you guys ready for that? First, uh, I'll address, um, the airport, so. As it stands right now. The airport does not, we contractually, in our union contract, we break down different positions, whether that be patrol deputy, civil deputy. Lieutenant, sergeants, detectives, things like that, the airport does not have this on the position, although we do ask them to do a different job than your regular road deputy. For all intents and purposes, you know, the airport position really doesn't, you know, they shouldn't be on, they shouldn't need to be on call for anything. You know, whereas if they fall into patrol deputy schedule, they would be, so, you know, there are some tweaks where to outline their position outside the typical patrol deputy umbrella would be beneficial for all parties involved, whether that be local employee. The sheriff's office, but also county. Uh, when it comes to the airport position, what we are asking is to add a, uh, in the contract, uh, under this memorandum of agreement, to add a paragraph that would specifically address that position. Uh, what we've asked is that a deputy permanently signed to the airport will work a rotated Panama schedule, schedule will be a rotating pattern, two days on, two days off, three days on, two days off, two days on, three days off. It consists of twelve-hour shifts, and I'll touch on some of the benefits of that, this is a schedule that is utilized by, uh, many other agencies and sheriff's offices. There, there are some certainly benefits to it, um, it works on a twenty-eight day cycle, forty-two hour payday. John Mahon is filling that position, works again, the patrol deputy schedule, so he currently gets compensated up thirty-one quarter hours a week, so. That is hour or is weekly, uh, pay would increase by three quarters of an hour, uh, with that being said. The benefits behind this, uh, from an administration standpoint is that currently, right now, since he does fall within that patrol deputy schedule, he earns two out of our four section. And so for schedule purposes, there's two out of four sections that never see a benefit of Mahon working at the airport, and I have to pull from each of them, and the pure typical road deputies to fill the airport, which sometimes leaves a short staff on those particular days. By doing this Panama schedule, we would offset, and each section respectively sees some form of a benefit of Mahon working here for, so logistically, just on the ground level, there's a benefit there amongst the rest of the deputies in the sections that work every day. Uh, in addition to that, another benefit from the twelve-hour shifts, the Panama schedule, is that during the summer months, the, the airport increases their flights. Their flights, uh, typically consist of a twelve-hour day, now that does not include any delays that may occur, or any, any flight cancellations or things like that, but if they operate on a twelve-hour day during the summer, or during their peak season, June, through October. So, under the current patrol deputy schedule, every single day that a person works there, without a doubt, without anything going wrong or any delays, there's automatically overtime incurred every single day. So this twelve-hour schedule would help mitigate those, uh, instances as well. On the flip side of that, now you have the non-peak season, the other seven months out of the year. Now, right now, there is, uh, during those seasons, there's three flights a day, so the flights do go down during those times of the year, so. In respect to saving an hour of overtime, every day during the five peak season months, you would spend an hour of straight time during that you don't currently, or. I shouldn't say that you don't currently, but there'd be an extra hour during the non-peak seasons, so what that would be able to do is it would help. Allow, uh, some relief or help assist, uh, patrol a little bit more during those busy hours, uh, so there would be a benefit to patrol there in administration. But once again, uh, it would have a direct impact on mitigating some of the overtime costs for the other five months of the year. Uh, administratively, that's the benefits of it, uh, from the, the union standpoint, it is a benefit for, uh, the person working there. It, right now, they have, uh, fifteen, they work fifteen out of a twenty-eight day cycle, uh, with the patrol schedule, under the Panama schedule, they've worked fourteen out of twenty-eight days. So, there's one less working day out of a twenty-eight day cycle, however, like I said, there is a, uh, a greater benefit to the rest of your deputies in the sheriff's office in each sections that work. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that you guys may have, that touches on this. I, I will caveat real quick too, this is something that was brought to the sheriff, approved, signed off on it, as you guys, uh, have seen, and this is also something that, uh, we spoke with Leroy about at the airport as well, uh, which he also approved.
Uh, I spoke with Leroy too, and, uh. They'll be starting that peak summer, here in another week or so, and which will be the twelve-hour schedule and whatnot, uh, but when it goes from peak back to the off-season, uh, there's only three flights a day. And they're spaced, uh, eight, eight and a half hours from the first one to the last one, and so, uh, and. There's two and a half hour, three and a half hours between each flight. So there's really only like, less than three hours of actual time necessary for the airport during the off-season, to have the security on-site, have to be there when they're boarding passengers, so. I'm going, and, and we're going to have, Michael's arranging to have a discussion with all the, with all the parties involved in airport security. Here in the next week or so, and so I'm gonna suggest that we approve this memorandum of understanding, this agreement. Uh, and sunset it at October thirty-first of this year, and before that date, we explore what would be a good workable schedule for the off-season for the airport. Uh, with the understanding that, uh, what the conditions are.
So my question, just not knowing how it operates, is, uh, when you don't need a deputy at the airport. Deputy's doing other things for the sheriff's department. Is that correct, or he's done, just not sitting there, it's not.
You're correct, so there's a couple of different, um, you're correct to some degree, so I'll explain that a little bit, uh, when there's a flight, TSA refires us to be there, and we typically have to be there an hour, or, I'm sorry, a half hour. Before the flight is scheduled to leave so that they can screen, that's the primary reason why they need us there during screening times, um, during the summer months, those twelve-hour days, because the increase in flights where they're pretty much all there.
Yeah.
Uh, during the, uh, non-peak season, I would, um. I would say that during the non-peak season is obviously the time of the year where we see what they're made, but that being said, there are often times, many times, there are delays, so. It is, you know, it's not as simple as we're just there a half hour before your flight during those times, because there are many days where, you know, a flight is delayed an hour, or two hours, or, hey, we'll let you know in thirty minutes, or we'll let you know in forty-five minutes type of deal. So, you know, it's not as easy as just being able to make a blanket statement saying that they're not needed during that time, because there are many times where that, that deputy is specifically held there. The other thing is, is, you know, it's while that deputy has that free time, it does serve as. The other thing is, is, you know, it's while that deputy has that free time, it does serve as some benefit to the sheriff's office. I will certainly not deny that on those days when available. However, I cannot ever count on that deputy, because I also have to make sure that they are available to then go back to the airport for flights. So, it, it does limit their ability, however, if, I will never dispute that there is some benefit there. You know, to the extent of approving the schedule for the summer months, you know, and I'm looking at a different schedule for the winter months. I mean, one, from the union standpoint, our deputies want to work the same, have a consistent schedule throughout the year. In addition to that, uh, you know, ideally, what we would like to see is that, you know, they have, they work the same schedule year-round, so that they can both account for that, they can plan their days off, they can plan vacation scheduling-wise, that works well as well. Uh, you know, I, we would really like to see it be something year-round. Um, in addition, if the airport changes, you know, from October, and the airline service that we contract with, if it's somebody different or if it's the same, they change their flight schedule, we'd like the ability, um, which you'll see in this memorandum of agreement, the schedule can be changed as needed by the sheriff in the agreement with the deputy, that is so that, you know, as they've done in the past with the flights changing, we also have the ability to accommodate that and build shift. Uh, you know, previously, when we were up here talking about schedules, we just, yes, said, well, why is it a, unfortunately, it's a contractual thing. If it wasn't, we would just make do with what we found to fit best for the airport. Ultimately, we're required to be there, and, and that's what we want to do.
Well, the, the problem is, as Noah said, in the off-season, it's only three flights. You have to be there a half hour before the flight, so within, you know, once the flight takes off, you know, commitment to the airport for that flight is over, so I mean, you're talking forty-five minutes to an hour at, at most, with three flights. And so that's a total of three hours they're working for the airport. But they're billing the airport nine and a half hours of tons. And if they're taking that man at the airport and bringing him back and using him out on the road for law enforcement services, A, why is the airport paying for that? And if that's the case, that's going to continue at nine and a half hours, that was going to go into twelve hours.
That's not in the agreement, that was, that part of it is not in the.
There's, there's need to be an agreement, that's, that's.
Yeah, I'm just simply here to talk about scheduling and, and how that works.
Nonetheless, we have to understand the billing part of this and what, and the impact it has on the airport. And that's the other thing, too, is that Dakota's doing a good job of taking care of this personnel. But we have to consider what's practical and applicable for the airport. And to have a twelve hour deputy there, paying twelve hours and billing the airport for twelve hours in the off-season, only working three hours a day, how can that be even considered reasonable for that to happen? So, what I'm saying is, is that I don't know what that schedule would be, we have plenty of time to work on it. Given the twelve hours now, and then just talk about what we're going to have, uh, after October thirtieth, that's a compromise between the, the deputy and the, uh, hip.
There's a hand in the back, but I, but I'd like to ask Mike a question. Mike? Disagreement wouldn't prevent that from happening.
What?
Would it? Disagreement. Sorry, you did. What you're bringing up, in my opinion, is a different issue. Or am I wrong?
What, which issue is different? What, which, which issue are you talking?
Well, disagreement doesn't talk about where it's billed or where the deputy is.
Nevertheless, we have to consider that, though. That has, we have to understand that, and that's why we're having these meetings here in another week or so. We're going to better understand the billing and all these, all these, give you synchronacies attached to this issue that's a little fuzzy around. So, what I'm saying is that let's accommodate the airport and the deputy right now, improve the twelve hour schedule for the peak, for the summer season. Have this meeting and figure out what's best for everybody, or at least what we can compromise for everybody, uh, for once we get back off, uh, peak season.
Yeah, John, I work the airport. I just want to bring up the fact that it's a typical Billy Clark statement. You're not going to be paying me twelve hours off-peak season at the airport. They bill him nine and a half hours now, that's what they're going to bill him. Off-peak, that's what they're billing now. If I go to the twelve hour schedule, that's still going to bill him nine and a half hours. The department's going to pay him for the rest of that, they're going to pay for the rest of that, it's no different.
Well, I don't understand the mind that I came from, paying forty-two hour work, you can see that.
They're billing the hours that you're at the airport, what they're billing for. The department's going to pay for the rest of that, they always have.
If you have, if you have three hours, you need to have the officer there, and the officer doesn't stay between forty, you're not, you're not paying him for the hours he's at the airport, that's the problem.
The, the one thing that I would like to bring back to your attention, gentlemen, in that aspect, is that it's not simply just three hours. You, those are the months of the year where you have the delays because of the inclement weather. There are many days you are there all day, in a perfect day, clear weather, no delays at all, yes, three hours. Does that happen seven days a week? Absolutely not. So, to make that as a blanket statement would be incorrect, so I just want to remind you of that. In addition to that, it, you know, for us, like I said, does that, that, would that deputy or had they came out and assisted on the road previously? Yes, to some extent, but it is not something that I can count on. It is not something that I can guarantee each and every day, and it's not something that I can tie them up with, with assisting on the road, because they do have a responsibility to go back to the airport. So, to say that, I mean, it's not as though I could just pull a road guy to fill these flights, I can't make that guarantee. And this person is dedicated to the airport. So, you know, with that being said, it, the, the twelve hours, I think, does save on overtime, uh, during the peak season months, those five months of the year. And, you know, if you think of time and a half out of five months of the year, time and a half on that, just some quick numbers, right? Seven, seven point five, five month, five times one point five, seven point five, right? And the other months of the year is the seven months. So, your, the county would still, you know, effectively be saving a half a month of, uh, however way you want to look at it. But what I'm getting at is, this is, uh, what is on the table, this is what the union supports, this is what the administration supports, this is what the airport, uh, has supported, all parties here have supported it. Uh, we would like to see it.
So, Michael.
So, yeah, not to throw monkey wrenches in here, but there are some questions right now that are still outstanding that, that we need to answer. I think on the overall administrative side, commissioner's side as well. Um, and in terms of scheduling, I mean, I get everything that's being said, but right now, we don't have a contractual agreement with the union that specifies a schedule. By doing this, you are locked into it, and I think there's still some unknown questions. Including, which I've repeatedly said both to Leroy and representatives of the sheriff's office, the TSA funding went away, so right now, we're not getting reimbursed for anybody's time. Now, Leroy says he has a plan to do that with the new bidding of the airlines, but again, that's a hundred percent background accounting. So, I'm not saying that they're playing in their hours and everything doesn't make sense, but you can't sit here and not consider the billing portion of it with the hours, because we, you're financially responsible. And we have that fiduciary responsibility, we do have that fiduciary responsibility to the county to make sure that all these numbers work, and that at the end of the day makes sense. And once you contractually agree to something, I mean, you're on the hook to that. And it does say it can change, but only if the deputy agrees. What if the deputy? Well, I mean, that's essentially, it doesn't even really say, he, it says deputy and chair. So, again, before you ink something permanently, I, that's where I'm coming from. I mean, as administrator, I've got questions that I can't necessarily give you a hundred percent answer right now. So, a, a temporary basis maybe, but I mean, if you're going to permanently agree to something and ink it, then I think there's some other questions that we need to sit down with everybody and, and get hammered out over the next couple of weeks before you make the final decision on that. So, that's, I mean, do what you desire, that's my personal opinion.
Well, it feels like this, actually, as opposed to Commissioner Clark's suggestion, it feels like we almost need to table this item.
Oh, yeah, till two weeks.
Till, till you guys figure that out. That's what it feels like to me, is there a downside to that?
Well, Leroy, Leroy's on, Leroy, this, uh, peak season starting, you said, middle of June?
Uh, yes, June, June fifteenth.
But, so we're, we're not, it's going to start before we, uh, before our next meeting, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
If we approve this timber, I mean, I don't think anybody disagrees that twelve hour schedule is, is good for the peak season.
Absolutely.
The issue is, is whether or not you want to continue it after the peak season. So, that's why I'm saying, if we approve it for the peak season, which nobody disagrees to, sunset it October thirty-first, and before then, decide whether we're going to continue it, whether we want to alter it, whether, whether, no way, I don't know.
That's sort of table, yeah.
Now, because, and the other thing is, is that if we leave the clause in here that allows the sheriff and the deputy to change this schedule, you must, we'll throw the whole article out, the whole section, because the section stipulates the schedule. If you give the sheriff and the deputy the ability to change that without the union approval or the power approval, then there's no need to have the schedule here at all. So, that, that shouldn't be in there. The other thing is, too, Dakota, it looks like reading something wrong, I think we're talking about Article twenty, twenty-one.
So, in the, in the past, they've had coverage during peak season, right?
Yeah.
It's just been covered through overtime. So, it seems like table one for now.
That was a, that's the, it's a special issue, okay, sorry.
Just two quick things. The, um, that wording about changing the schedule came from what the, uh, civil deputy had in hand. Because we found out last year, that whatever airline's there that's changed the schedule they did, it happened to fit within what we're working. If they changed it without, then we're just trying to negate coming back and doing this again. That's why that was there. It's far as table, and I personally would want to, because, um, then I'm working five twelve hour days. Last summer, I worked six twelve hour days, and it's not healthy, especially at my age.
All right, well, I'm in favor of. Well, my melchist to approve a memorandum of agreement as proposed, deleting the sentence that gives the sheriff and deputy the ability to alter it, changing the article to Article twenty, and sunsetting this agreement October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
But why not? Why take the line, I, aren't we better off with the language in there so that they have?
Well, you're taking away your ability and the union's ability to, to approve any change they want to make in the schedule. As I read this, they can change the schedule without the union approval or hours, which kind of circumvents the whole thing of having a, a section in the first place.
Well, uh, my, my contention is that I think having that language is beneficial to the county.
Why?
Because then if it needs to change, the sheriff and the deputy can change it.
What if you don't agree to it? You've got, you've got no, you've got no.
Shouldn't have you decide upon operations and how we, to address our schedule.
Dakota, this is a union contract, it's between the commissioners and the union, no, between the sheriff's department and the union. This is our contract.
I understand that, Commissioner Clark, I was talking to the needs of the sheriff's office.
Well, is there similar language that's already in there? Is there anything like this in there?
Well, I didn't, I didn't know what the, John says has language in the civil process.
So, there is, under, uh, the civil process coordinator, under the, uh, contract, it says, uh, due to the unusual demands of this position, there will be unlimited flexibility in the schedule as deemed necessary by the sheriff and in the agreement of the civil process coordinator. So, what that line came from, that you're currently reading, is a, uh, is a line that's already currently used in the contract.
And if you understand the civil deputy's workability, you understand, first of all, it's a one-man show. Second of all, if you're talking about postings, if you're talking about, uh, other things that make your job unique, that would be a requirement. Uh, I don't see those requirements necessary in the airport security.
Well, my point is, I think it's beneficial to have that flexibility in there for the county, for the sheriff and the, to not have to go through the union to change that if they need to, for some operation. I, I agree with, you know, that's the only point. I think the county's better off with that language than without.
Well, the sheriff's, sheriff is better off, but when you say county, the, the union, the sheriff is, 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 in other words, he can make that change without any oversight from the union or us. And that's a, that's a, that's a, it's a pretty nice, uh, setup, but it doesn't, doesn't serve us very well.
Well, quite honestly, we're the only county that really has this verbiage in our union contract anyway.
I mean, a lot of other, I mean, as we've discussed previously, a lot of other counties' scheduling is left up to the department itself. You know, it's kind of unique that we have it in here, and that's kind of what, what brought us to this point. So, I mean, we're already a little different in that sense. I mean, it does allow us to address scheduling needs as, that need.
That's why I like that.
I guess that I, my only points to that would be that, I think it just boiled down to whether or not, it's just a trust thing, whether or not you trust us to be able to accurately, um, change the schedule if needed to the needs of the airport.
I made the motion, can you get something, do you second the motion? Let's get it at this point. You want to redo the motion?
Well, I, I, I have no problem with that motion, left that part out.
I, yeah, that's the dismotion.
Okay, so, uh, so I'm going to move to approve the Teamsters memorandum of agreement related to the airport deputy's schedule as presented. And then, what was the sunset date?
First, Commissioner, I need to, if you could just make the change of Article twenty instead of.
Uh, I purposely left that out, this, uh, to prove the Teamsters memorandum of agreement related to Article.
Twenty would be the correct article.
Oh, twenty. Actually, we're at Article twenty, the airport deputy's schedule as presented with a sunset date of October thirtieth, December fifty-first, October thirty-first. Twenty twenty.
On second motion. Any other discussion?
Just real quick clarification, so basically, based on these changes, you guys will have to redraft that on something and then s- send it around again, even, because I still don't know.
Well, they never send it around, I, I don't see any signatures. Did you get a signature finally?
Yeah, so, speaking, uh, with our union rep, uh, his position was that, uh, similar to the union contract, that it would come to, uh, you guys to either approve or deny. Once you approve one, then he would take it back and get their signatures, um, which is what was done on the union contract as well. Um, his position is, is that, uh, there's no, uh, it's kind of obsolete to get his board of signatures, only that if you guys deny it anyway, at which point, uh, again, some of the union contract, if you guys agree, they'll get their signatures.
So, the answer is, you can take this back, modify it based upon the motion today, bring it back to what's the day it's on, right?
Today, the sign, is that what you said? I can send it, uh, through circulation, I mean, today, sure.
Uh, you can't take this downstairs and modify it, bring it back up before we recess today, and just for us to, just for us to sign?
Yes.
So, so I made that motion.
Yeah.
Well, Michael, and then second, sort of how we're discussing, so my question, Michael. I think that your points are very valid about, to be, about, you know, moving forward. I think by doing this, this puts us in a better position. moving forward. I think by doing this, this puts us in a better position to look over thirty first because we would have to do this anyways through all of her.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on position. Like, is it better operationally? That's up to sheriff's office, what you have today, yeah. From a finance standpoint, I'm telling you, we lost our revenue to pay for these portions of these, of that position. So your revenue in your budget right now is gonna be way down, but your expenses will be what they have that unless we make some changes over the next couple of weeks based upon some conversation that, that will occur. So, you're not necessarily agreeing to anything more, but you could actually say, look, here's a minimum requirement. We don't have the money to pay for this, so how do we do this job? We haven't had that conversation. We will definitely have to have the conversation in the upcoming budget, and hopefully Leiborgh will be correct that he will have, uh, been able to write that language into the agreement that, uh, for the polls that go out to bid for the, the airlines, and then they will be paying that now instead of the TSA. But right now, you've lost that reimbursement, reimbursement portion. So if you're looking at it from a budgetary standpoint, I'm telling you, you don't have the money. You still have the obligation, the airport does, but you don't necessarily have that money coming in.
So one thing that I think is the direct answer to what you were asking is that if we have twelve hour days throughout the summer, regardless if we approve it now, the, the difference is, is that those twelve hour days that may on would be working if you didn't approve this. You are, are, will still end up paying twelve hours, but that twelfth hour will be a time and a half rather than straight time.
Well, so that's a, that's why I'm making this motion, to be honest.
I mean, because no matter what, we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, but the motion you're making, everybody agrees to.
Well, no, I'm, I'm trying to answer Michael's question.
Well, Michael, this specific question is tied to how do we get this memorialized? Because what was sent to us is not what you are potentially going to vote on. So that was my question. So we don't leave this, you know, to whatever. I, I mean, if they can make the change and you sign it, yeah, the union has to sign it, so then the sheriff just needs to sign the new one as well. And then you go on your way. But I'm taking this opportunity to tell you from a budgetary standpoint, at the end of the year, just like the jail, you're gonna have issues because you're not gonna have that revenue coming in. So to memorialize something in the union agreement now that's not been memorialized before, when there may need to be greater flexibility, and that's nothing to do with the sheriffs, it's nothing to do with you, it's to do with the county and our fiscal responsibilities and the budgetary responsibilities. And I'm just making that point now.
But if we, if we didn't do anything, if we didn't, he still, he still has contractual scheduled toward the contract, right, Michael?
Well, not toward, while towards the contract, in terms of the hours and stuff it states, yes.
But not, so this, this does, this does address, temporarily address the disparity between the schedules he's on and a better one.
I'm not arguing against schedule. I'm not, I mean, I'm leaving that up between what they think is operational and what you are. I'm just telling you, no matter what schedule you reach to, you got money problems in terms of paying that.
Well, if we approve, potentially, if we approve the motion as presented, it's a big issue anyways because there's two weeks down the road, they decide, you know, this really does, I don't want to feel like someone who has a nine hour schedule, they can do that. So we, we haven't really done anything except get them away from the existing schedule. Because once you approve this, they don't need us anymore. They can come up with whatever schedule they want. If you're sunsetting, then you haven't done anything. If you didn't, if you agreed to it permanently, you've added this into the contract now that's not currently in the contract.
So you've given it that other layer of, so again, now, if we find out going down the road that we have to adjust scheduling because we don't have money, you can't come up with money. Unless you're gonna put that wholly back on taxpayers, then we've got no flexibility because you have it in the contract now that you've got a deputy that's gonna have ship.
But if we, if we sunset it, sunset that to this is language.
Yes, right. That's what I'm saying. If you don't include that, then until we get some of this other stuff cleared out, until we find out what's gonna happen with the funding portion, there's unknown questions. So certainly, I would say that it would probably make sense to lock into something beyond what you're trying to do, because there, there's still some unknown questions up there.
Yeah, so, so what I'm fishing for is my motion.
Yeah.
I think from listening to all this, I think that it's safe. I think we're better off than without it till October thirty first. Right?
Yeah, I'm not, if you wanna go the route you're going, I'm not subjecting to that. I'm making it known that there's monetary issues and there's some other issues that we need to figure out in terms of how this is all taken care of. And in terms of my specific question that led to your question was just, how do we get this to reflect what you're gonna approve?
I have, uh, if this is approved, I just wrote it down, we'll have to take the ball, run downstairs and make the amended changes and bring it back.
Okay, and then this next question is, we, as I read it, we're contractually, it doesn't matter whether we can pay for it or not, or who's paying for it. We're contractually bound to, to provide service there, right?
Based on certain things. Now, again, that, whether, whether it is flexibility, the, as you stated, half an hour before. So I mean, whether that's twelve hours, whether that's three hours, whether anybody else can do it or can do it. I mean, we haven't had those conversations, so we don't know where we are in regards to that. But you may have to foot the bill, and I may have to go back to county taxpayers if you, depending on where we end up. But again, all, my only point was, you, you've got that obligation now. We haven't had that discussion. So we haven't got into the new budget, and, and Leiborgh hasn't had, come here and really explained the full effect of what's gonna happen in terms of that reimbursement. Uh, that's just other unknowns that I'd hate to see you add something on permanently when we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
All right, I'm calling. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't want to be opposed, not to the twelve hours or the sunset, I'm opposed to the, uh, the ability of the sheriff and the deputy to change it, so I'm opposed to.
So you kept that language?
Yeah.
Okay.
I kept. Kept one.
Yes, yes, my motion was as presented with a sunset date.
Oh, no.
And, yeah, they kept, excuse me, they kept the language that allowed the sheriff and deputy to change it.
Okay.
So for the, uh, next schedule change to be discussed.
I don't think it's any problem, you know. Do you have a problem with this? Detective one to four days down.
It actually brings their work week for the county from forty-two and a half hours down to forty-two percent. There's a little bit of savings.
That's it.
Yeah, so move to approve the Thiemster's memorandum of agreement related to the tax schedule.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you've got the same wrong one. You've got, you've got Article twenty.
And so, that, that is one thing I wanted to bring up, thank you. Uh, it, it should be, Commissioner Clark is correct on that, it should be Article twenty.
You could make that, that the motion, or change that article.
And I'll have Detective Hall make that same correction and bring it back up, uh, Friday, in the meeting for your signatures.
Okay, so it should be like this. Move to approve the Thiemster's memorandum of agreement related to Article, uh, twenty, as scheduled as presented. Does that do it? Thank you, Charles.
Yeah, we know. I've signed the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
On C C.
Uh, one thing on that is on Friday, the day after I sent the, uh, report out, uh, the report of about four mile stretch of grass fires along the air town in Hancock, October. I was just about, um, so about fifty, several times calls, one right at the other, so several possible recordings. I'm not sure what the cause was. We've never been told what the cause was. Four mile, four and a half mile stretch. Basically, highways and cars.
You think they know what's that?
I'm not sure. We haven't heard anything back yet. Best guess is, because so many people, it's really hard to believe it's on the water, on the side, it's traffic. I think, I think.
The chemical getting us back.
I think so. But I, I don't know, we'll ever know. We gotta.
Videos will play.
Yeah, yeah, we have to be.
I don't know if they accept the file, they actually seem to clear the report as presented.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have any questions, or am I?
I'm gonna move to accept the file, uh, the EMA monthly report is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Explain for me this.
So the RAY system, at, at the prior meeting where you were considering, um, different expenditures, this was discussed, but we had to go back and listen to the video, look at the video and so on. It was never really formally, uh, approved by you as, as a standard, and so that's purpose, but I'll put it back today with it. Uh, my involvement with it is based upon other counties, uh, through emergency management have purchased and implemented use of the RAY system. And it's a mass notification system that, uh, its real benefit to us here in Hancock County, uh, is that it's a two-way system. So it's messaging out to individuals, but it's also the ability to kind of plug the feature that allows individuals to, uh, look, report emergency circumstance that they may have regardless where they are, in accordance complex, or even at the airport.
This, we sort of talked about this during.
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's a.
Andrew, I'm just trying for looking for clarification. So the total cost is the twelve five, is that correct?
No, that's correct, yes.
So I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of the RAY notification system for a term of thirty-six months for a total sum of twelve thousand five hundred.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your action. Is your answer? Great, thank you.
Talking about laptops?
I was talking about laptops, but, uh, I would like to go back to the camera system, we'll wait to get them. We took it off the agenda because I want to get purchased today. But, uh, a, a few points I do want to stress about the camera system is, one, uh, my server expires next year. Two, the, uh, cameras that we currently have in ours, as of January first, those cameras are not compatible with our system, if we fly the cameras. What happens, we have the four RVs right now. And as of January first, we have M five hundreds, and after January first, uh, those M five hundreds aren't compatible with what we have. So I don't want to take action at the end of the year. I'd like to take action uh, maybe by August first, come up with a date where you guys, maybe it might be acceptable to take action. I think that's a move that we should make, Michael, of Susan Collins.
Yeah.
Uh, but we do need lead time to take action, install things, and I don't want to wait till the last minute on January first and have a problem with the cameras, and also we have vehicles that aren't operational. So as long as you guys approve that, I'd like to give a date of maybe like August first to take action on this.
Well, I, uh, I, I, that's not really up to us, right? That's the grant.
Well, we talked about the grant before, that there's possibility of the grant, but, uh, talk to Andrew about that, and he said that those funds could be used elsewhere as well, uh, so we, we won't be out that money and not be able to use it, we can spend it elsewhere. Uh, but I don't want to wait till the end of December for that grant, the possibility of, and risk having a problem after January first. So that's why I'm asking that. Yeah, I don't want to make a decision today, but let's say August first, or somewhere around that date, we take action on this and maybe purchase it with our funds.
Yes, here, here's the grant, Susan Collins, a, a state grant.
You make, pays for the same thing.
Yep.
It comes from the same source.
No.
It's the same grant.
It's the same.
That you wrote for.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the same grant.
And, and. Basically, either that or offer.
I think, my point is, I need to pay for it either, either way. Because then we would be foregoing the grant.
Yeah. And hopefully we'll have a better sense. Even if you do discuss it again in August, maybe we'll even know. The rate is certainly where we're at, so. But what I'm requesting is, I, I need lead time to get these things installed, and I don't want to wait till the last minute and the final hour. Be caught on January first with a cruiser down that has camera system available, and then I can put it, system in it that's operational.
I think the issue is the grant fund, the grant funds aren't being released till next year, so it'll be after the expiration of what the system we currently have. Because I'm pretty sure that's what Andy was saying this morning, but.
Yeah, I had just spoken to Andy earlier, and he was saying that the funds won't be released until after next year, well, until the next year. Which kind of puts us in a, puts us in a wrong.
Well, because we have a little time.
And, and you said Susan Collins said something about.
She just, she just indicated in the letter that she had supported adding that into the appropriations. So that doesn't mean that it's approved, it just means that that'll go on the list of potential projects for that. Funds are those funds that are being booked, so.
Okay.
Well, I think a little time and iron it out is not a bad thing.
I think we have a little bit of time, but I really do not want to pass August, just for expiration time in person. That's my, my point. And we can move on to laptops. Laptops, I'm gonna give you a breakdown of different ones. We've got four different quotes of the Delta Action, where is your? I T S and Motorola. Uh, the I T S and Motorola were similar price. And after speaking with the sheriff department, we decided that we prefer to go with the I T S solutions, a little bit less money. Uh, you have the breakdown in the I T S of how many that we're asking for. It has it by department. We have mine for the jail, the EMA, R C C, and the sheriff department, and with dogs. If you have any questions about what we're asking for.
So I'll read this motion. I think it touches on what you're trying to accomplish. Move to accept the proposal from I'll Tech Services for the purchase of forty-one Gentec laptops, thirty-three docking stations. Sum up, he's at two hundred five thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-six cents.
Actually, it's, uh, if you look at the number four on my little write-off, it's, uh, two hundred eight, this is forty-one laptops and thirty-one dogs. Uh, we gotta change at the very end, or the, uh, or the jail for addition.
Sorry, I take that into account. Okay, we'll get it again.
Forty-one, thirty-three, two hundred five, forty-four. Oh, you said?
Yes.
Yeah. You have the right.
Okay.
We said, whoa, I'm looking at, oh, thirty-five, uh, twenty-five. Do I have to add these up, if I did one? Just one?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, okay, okay.
But it's forty-one laptops, thirty-three docking stations, stuff to go along with it, two hundred five thousand four hundred eighty-four, forty-six.
That is.
So that was, that was my motion.
Seven. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, no, not just some.
Move to accept the file of the Mayans monthly report is presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move to accept and file a human resource monthly report is presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's get those in order. We're moved to accept, uh, excuse me, accept and approve the monthly bill.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Got your procedures, uh, to the amendments?
Yeah, so you should have had that in your package yet. Last meeting, we we discussed kind of policy behind it, and then I made those changes unless you want any additional changes. Question is, how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, I was just gonna move to approve then the amended uh, procedures and requirements policy as presented.
You did have the motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Any other discussion on it? I've, that's basically what you were asking. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks for the work. Okay, so this next one, I think, without reconsidering, I think I can make this motion and take care of it. So I'm gonna move to correct the minutes of, uh, the minutes of the item five D of the March twelfth, twenty-fourth, commissioners needed to indicate that the motion failed with a vote of one to two on background by opposed in accordance with the actual action that occurred on item five D of the March twelfth, the mission. I know, but I.
I signed a motion.
Yeah, we could have reconsidered it and gone through and amended it, but I think.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that does it, right?
Sure. Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna take a break.
Yes. Yeah, I know. I'm gonna have to this.